Called order the city council meeting for City of East Grand Forks Tuesday, September 18th, 2018 is now five o'clock, but city council call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassil.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Riappel.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn of the car scene, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
The open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda, items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or as our commissions for research and future council agendas. If appropriate, if you'd like to address the city council up this time, please come to podium. I see none approval minutes for the August 28th work sessions, September 4th regular meeting and September 11th work session.
Move.
My Demers.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? That roll call please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassil.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Here. Yes. Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lettings none, scheduled public carings none, consent agenda, item done under consent agenda will be adopted. One motion, however, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and actions they choose. Any council member like any of the items under the consent agenda pulled at this time? If not, Mr. Tweetin's made a motion.
Thank you.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassil.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged, received reports of officers, boards and commissions for regular meeting minutes of water, light, power and building commission for August 16th, 2018. Communication number 18, update on Grove Minnesota report. Mr. Wilford and Mr. Gordon.
Good evening. Barry and I annually take advantage of participating in the Grove Minnesota activities, activity of the Minnesota Chamber, to meet with businesses. This year we met with about 20 businesses. In general, what we found is that the things that we stated last year, the things we found last year are still true this year and the information that we had supports what we did. As you look at your report, what we did is we put last year's data and this year's data on there. Last year's data is in black, this year's data is in red so that you can pick it out. And if I could find where it is, I could talk a little bit more, but maybe that's a good thing.
There it is, right there.
Okay. I mean, there's not a lot to say. Basically, it's a very favorable report. Businesses like being here in East Grand Forks. They're doing well. Most of the businesses are increased, have increased their profits this, from last year. Even those that did not increase their profits, there are only two of those, have increased their profitability. So businesses are doing well. They like being here. One of the very strong findings that we've found when we were out and talking with the businesses is that the huge majority of businesses in East Grand Forks are locally owned and operated. People, the business owners have a vested interest in the community and it shows. And it's one of the very big strengths that we have over here with our businesses. And that's a, that's a huge finding for us. And you see it along Restaurant Row, you see it out in the industrial park, you see it throughout the community. And it's just a tremendous thing. Barry?
I'll just make a couple quick comments. The 20 companies that Paul and I visited had 689 full-time employees, 215 part-time, 434 seasonal employees. As Paul said, their company, the number of companies that have seen increased sales, 11 of the 20 had increased, only two decreased and seven of them were stable. And then in terms of profitability, nine had seen increased profitability over the last year, 10 were stable and only one saw a decrease. So I really, I think, you know, at the end of the day, the East Grand Forks business community continues to be very stable, growing slightly. And I think a couple of the challenge, if there's a challenge, it's probably still workforce. Although I thought it was kind of interesting, we heard less about workforce this year than we did last year because a lot of the companies have kind of figured out a way to find employees. It's been such a problem for so long. They are either have automated or working with less. But the bigger employers that need a lot of employees are still definitely having a hard time finding employees. So workforce will continue to still be an issue.
Demers? Should we talk about Demers briefly?
Sure, go ahead.
Next year, you know that Demers is going to be after reconstruction over in Grand Forks. Fortunately for us, the intersection at Third is going to be open, but we're going to have to make a concerted effort to make sure everybody knows you have, you actually have good access still to East Grand Forks businesses. We'll have to work together with our businesses, particularly on Restaurant Row and areas like that, to make sure that people know that the businesses are open for business and that we will continue to be receptive to having people come over here. It's not as hard as we think. There you have to may take a little bit different route, but you'll still be able to get over here.
Yep. I think the other, the other thing I think that's beneficial with this is that as Paul and I went out, there are four or five companies that have said that they are looking to expand next year. And this gives us a chance to kind of uncover that, find out what they're thinking. And then this will give Paul a chance over the course of the next 12 months before we do this again, to follow up with those businesses, to see what we can do as a community to help those businesses expand and, you know, look for a lot, look for a new building, those types of things. So I think at the end of the day, that's probably the most valuable part of these visits is it really kind of, kind of takes some of the walls down with some of our business people and say, what can we do to really help as a city and as a community? And I think the other thing that really kind of jumped off the page again to me this year was we really have a responsive city hall and community. We heard that from all 20 of the businesses. People speak very, very highly about being able to do business in East Grand Forks and really appreciate the support from city hall. So we have a good business climate here, very stable and growing. So, thank you.
And as Barry was saying, last year, out of 13 people we visited, there were about four or five of the companies that came to us for loan assistance and we were able to provide those loans to facilitate their expansions. So this is a good way to reach out and connect with our business community.
Yep. I should also say, we asked Deb Keel, actually she asked us if she could go with on a couple of visits. And I think that's going to be a best practice that we might start where other communities that participate in the Grove Minnesota project may invite their legislators to go on a couple of visits with them. It's, it was kind of nice to have the legislators hear firsthand from businesses what some of the challenges are that they're facing down in St. Paul, whether it's pollution control, minimum wage, or some of the different issues. So I think that actually was a real strength and that was Paul's idea to invite her with on a couple of those. So I'll give kudos to Paul for doing that. I think that, I think other cities will copy us next year in Minnesota.
And the invitation is always open for all of you. Last year, for example, Councilman Pachivinsky came along on at least one of them. The conversation got deterred, diverted into who had the most twins memorabilia, but that's just a small thing.
So, okay. Anyway, unless there are any other questions, thank you for your time.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you did 13 last year and 20 this year. What's the selection process? Is there overlap between those groups or?
Three of the companies this year did overlap. What we're looking at is first, our first focus last year was all the primary sector employers. So anyone who basically exported or shipped or sold most of their goods outside of the community. This year, we looked again at some of the larger employees and again, those who have more of a regional kind of trade area. And then next year, we'll continue to the process and we'll visit another 15 to 20 again next year.
And we added specifically a couple on Restaurant Row area because we know what's coming up next year. We needed to get their input and be able to start the dialogue with them on that.
Okay. So I'm just, in my own mind, I just want to make sure, so you can't be, use those as like a trend line, those, those responses from year to year because they're not the same businesses.
That's correct.
Yeah. Is, is there any, is that part of the goal is to create maybe the same?
The data actually does go into the state data. So the state Chamber of Commerce actually is collecting the data in communities throughout the state of Minnesota. And then that data is reported out as an aggregate. But again, it's, it's a snapshot in time. It's really intended more to see what are some of the challenges that our businesses are seeing right before they, we go into the legislative session and report back to that to the legislature. That's the chamber's real purpose. I think the benefit for East Grand Forks of us doing this is, A, the communities being responsive, the chamber and the city are responsive to the business community's needs. And we've uncovered some things that we've been able to correct and really help those businesses out and create some communication between the city and, and those businesses. So that's, I think, been the value add from this process for the city of East Grand Forks.
Thank you. Over, over many years, because we'll be using the totality of the businesses here, it will create some comparability of data over time, but it'll be an overall picture. It won't be one from one year to the next, it won't be exact.
Anybody else have anything? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, guys.
Old business, there's none. Move on to new business. Number 19, consider approving the change order for installation of exhaust system for the interconnected lift station for total amount of $43,792.11.
Move.
Move by Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Grassil. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassil.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 20, consider adopting resolution number 18-09-58, rejecting the quotes that were collected on September 7th, 2018 for the 2018 city project number three, parking lot improvements.
Move.
Second.
By Tweetin, second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassil.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Pachivinsky.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 21, consider adopting resolution number 18-09-60, approving staff to help in effort of letter intent to apply for grant dollars for the study of setting up multicultural center in East Grand Forks.
Move.
Move by Grassil.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Mayor Gander.
Well, go ahead. Clarence, have at it.
Mr. Vetter.
I just want to double check my facts here. This grant isn't for any building or infrastructure of any kind. This is to study.
I could respond to that. So I do apologize that I was unable to introduce this item last Tuesday night at the work session. I had to step out in the middle of that meeting to go speak at the kickoff of the United Way Fund Drive for this year. So some of you may know the history of the cultural center conversation, but in case you don't, I will share what I know and for sure folks can fill in the blanks with that. It started with administration from ISD 595, the public school district. They had the idea of a center for the whole community to gather and build relationships between people of all different nationalities, including Norwegians, Swedes, Hispanic folks, Somalis, Polish, German and everybody else. Now, among all of those folks, there's a young woman named Decca. And Decca oversees a lot of the immigration of families into our school district. Decca wanted to serve the people again of all nationalities, particularly those who don't speak English and especially the adults, to make sure that they can learn written and spoken language of English along with basic math skills. And the, the driving force behind that is to help them prepare to enter the workforce, to get them into the job so they can fill out the application and actually perform the work, able to communicate, able to do the math skills necessary to do the job. Another objective of the cultural center would be to help all of these different cultural groups to connect together, all, all in one place. How do we hope to connect with folks in our community if we don't share a language? And so the goal would be especially for the adults, to acquire the, the language, written and spoken English language, math skills, so that we can all connect. For all we know, they're Vikings fans just like we are. So that would be worthwhile. Another benefit of parents being able to learn to speak English is to be able to help their children in, in their schoolwork and help the kids stay caught up in class. And so that would be another benefit. Also, Decca has made it very clear over and over again, she's really a lot of the driving force behind this. She'd want to have at this center, a number of events each year for all of us to gather. Cultural events where we could maybe share food and learn about the, the cultural variety that we have here in our community. That could be part of it. Decca herself benefited from a place like this in the Twin Cities when her family came to America. And now she wants to turn around and repay the, the benefit that she was given and the help that she received. Part of this center, if it comes together, would include childcare services because these adults who have children who need to learn the language would need someone to take care of their children so they could actually listen and learn to what was being taught. The current plan is to rent a space, not to own any real estate, and this would have no religious component whatsoever. So this started with EGF Public Schools. They will be the lead organization in the grant application. Participating partners tentatively will include Northland Community Technical College. They do have a grant writer that will be writing the grant proposal. Polk County Health, the Global Friends Coalition, and if you don't know of them, that's Cynthia Schaub and staff, and a ton of volunteers who have been involved in this community doing these kinds of things for several years. I, I don't know of a more efficient organization operating on not a huge budget, but with tons of volunteers and really engaged in this effort for a very long time, making great strides. And then it would include also the City of East Grand Forks if we approve joining the group. So we wouldn't be the lead, we wouldn't be committing any funds at this point, but we are at the table and have been. Chad invited me, thanks for that, Chad, I do appreciate it. And along with myself, we've had Paul Gordy because of the economic component to this. Now, the name of the grant being applied for is called the Communities Thrive Program. It's administered through Northwest Minnesota Foundation. Grant amounts could be up to $100,000 according to what is needed for the project. As you know, we are currently writing the grant proposal and it would include study funds, but also some funds for, you know, in the application, hopefully it would be approved, for some technology, maybe some furniture, some of the basic startup costs for a center like this. But not to commit to buy real estate, not to leverage city dollars against anything. It's just all front-end getting it started kind of stuff. I like the concept, particularly the fact that it's for all residents who want to learn English and math skills to enter the workforce, and that includes a plan for fun gatherings for the whole community. One thing that I want to never see in our community is a subculture of folks divided out to the side based on ethnic or language differences. We're bigger than that. We're one community and we want to go forward as one community. And we can only build those connections and that trust when we can talk to one another and share the common language. Having grown up here, I love this community. I have always felt that everyone here has a chance. Then when I went to Chicago for school from 83 to 87, I was part of a community that was culturally divided, right on the edge of a ghetto of African-American folks. When I looked across there, I saw the crime and the squalor and the boarded up buildings and the fact of children being born into that kind of an environment. And I said, even back then, I remember walking through those neighborhoods and not, not, guys, mostly I walked on the edges of them. I wasn't really welcome there, thinking, I love my community of East Grand Forks where everybody has a chance. We don't have such an area where kids coming in have maybe a 1 in 10 chance of hitting a good stride academically, hitting a good stride in terms of professional advancement and a good career. I'm, I'm really proud of, of our community and I'm proud of, of the effort that's going on right now to, to knit these folks into the fabric of who we are as a community.
This just is government at its best. We've spent a year studying this issue, so now we're going to apply for a $100,000 grant to study the issue. Doesn't make any sense. I've thought a lot about it in the last week. I've got a solution to your problem. I'm all for integrating people into our community. We've got a thing that's called community education. So if you need an English-speaking class, add it to your community education classes. If you need a class that teach new Americans our laws or our culture, add a class of community education. We don't need a separate building for a cultural center. Integrate them right into our society with programs that we originally have. Thank you.
And the trouble with that would be, it, it would educate them, but it really doesn't bring us all together, right? That's, that's part of this is to bring us all together.
So if you want to have a group get together, we've had numerous group get-togethers in this community and they're always well-attended. So I don't want to see why it's any different. Why do you have to have a separate building to invite everyone to? We've got parks, we've got a city hall here, there's the school districts. We, like I say, we've done it in the past, we've had community events this year already and everyone's invited to them.
Please keep in mind too, that the life of this effort didn't start with the city. The life of this effort started with the schools and it has caught on in not just government, but a lot of, of good private sector. Again, when I talk about Global Friends Coalition and Cynthia has said she would like to be able to be part of something like this and, and others. I would hope also businesses long-term, how does this thing get funded? If, if we can successfully train several hundred people for, for jobs, if that's our objective, perhaps businesses would say, yeah, that will help us a lot from an employment standpoint. I'd like to help fund that. So this is, please don't get the idea this is government. This is something other than government. This is a private sector effort to try to equip people to, to have a good life here.
Mike? You were first.
Okay. Last week when Mr. Gordy gave the presentation, there was some question about where this money was going to go. I trust that, that that will be firmed up and that we're not just getting $100,000 and okay. Did you, when you were speaking, mention people of Polish descent? I think you did. And to that I say, "Jankujia," which I think means thank you in Polish. It couldn't be a curse word, I'm not sure, but that's what I think it means. And my, my point for saying that is, my father went to school in Elvredo, Minnesota. He spoke very, very little English when he went to school and he was picked on. So my family has a history of being in the position with the new, that the new Americans are in now, not knowing the language that well and trying to fit in, trying to find their way. So whatever we can do, I think is a good thing. My mother's from Oslo, Minnesota, my dad's from Warsaw, North Dakota. So there's, there's immigrants, immigrants make up all of, all of our past and we need to do, we need to do the best we can for today's immigrants to help them fit in.
Mr. Riappel.
I think the mayor answered my question. I think it should be private sector funded though. We can support it as a city, as a city council, but I think dollar-wise, it should come from the private sector.
I agree.
Okay. Any else have any comments?
I'll speak to, to what, to tail off with the mayor about private sector, you know, there's a lot of things that happened on both sides of the river. I personally work with the, I'll say LaGrave Learning Center. My company is graciously donate private money to buy computers or software to help them learn skills on the computer there, help them learn how to use Word documents, Excel spreadsheets, just different things. We donate money so that they can have the hardware and software to help citizens out that need that learning. We are going to be involved in classes to help them out, learning basic needs of checking, savings, just different things, different things of life that we go through that we take for granted that everybody knows about. I think backing them, looking at this and having the outlook at it of saying, private sector needs to help a lot, that's the main goal of what my understanding what HUD wants and what they talked about when they're here last month or month and a half ago. Getting more and more private sector, you know, people working together with these organizations and helping out in making a better workforce and getting that workforce trained up. I think it's a good idea to take a look at this and like Mr. Riappel said, we can back it and we can be part of, you know, helping and promote this as a good thing for our whole community, so.
President, Mr. Gordy, anything you want to add? I know you've got a lot of facts and figures and details. Please.
Just one small thing, if I may. We met with the folks from the Northwest Minnesota Foundation, Representative Keel was there at the same time. One of the difficulties of our school district is they don't qualify for some of the grants that would allow them to do some of the things that we could do through here. Just there are things where they don't have the right size populations, people who are in the right income brackets. So we are denied funding up here that other places in the state can get, have access to. And this is a way to address some of those issues. It was something that, for example, Representative Keel was not aware of, so it was a way to educate our state legislators as well, that the way the programs operate on a statewide level often damage us or hurt us up here. So this was one way to try to address some of those issues. That's the only thing I'd like to add.
Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not for you. So, I guess I support the effort quite a bit. I think you already laid out the argument pretty eloquently, so we'll get on top of that. But I would just hope that the way we look at this is, how do you build that integration? And I'm a little bit skeptical about whether or not you need a facility. I think you can use this, this money to look at, how can we coordinate? To, to Mr. Vetter's point, there is a lot of resources we have. You know, when you started talking about meals, I started thinking about, you know, the senior center. They've already started this process of going down different meals and different cultures and stuff like that. Maybe instead of having a separate facility, we, we say that we're going to use the senior center for some things or whatever, you know? That would be my hope is at least if we go through this, we aren't singularly trained on just getting a facility, that we can look at how we can integrate this, you know, community, community development stuff, you know? All the, all the resources we already have first before we start going out and getting that one spot. And to that point, you know, I wonder if you have one spot, does that become like, almost like another way to separate things? You know what I mean? That's the one spot. If you say, we're going to try and work every part of what we do into integration, maybe that's a faster and better way to integrate. You know what I mean? Outside of facility, you know, and like I said, I don't, I don't know the answer for sure, but I would at least hope that through the, the process that that could be examined, thinking about ways that, you know, that different entities can bring in and, and bring people together. I, I think about, one of the best ways for people to integrate is, is sports and stuff like that, you know? And how do we, how do you get people more involved in, in our, you know, park and recreational activities? How do you get them more involved in stuff like community soccer that kind of is its own thing? You know, bringing all those type of things that we might be under-integrating, maybe if we maximize that stuff, you don't need a separate facility that might put up four walls that might keep people separated. If, and that's maybe figurative, but you know what I'm saying. I, I support this and I'll vote yes on it. I just hope that that's part of the conversation. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Anybody from the audience? Dale?
You know, I'm a huge fan of Parks. I just have a question. You're talking about buying a $100,000 grant for a study.
Oh.
Who are we going to hire to do this study and why is it going to take $100,000?
Good thought. So the, the grant tops out at $100,000. So our application would be for something less than that or up to that. The study component would be far less than that amount because we would be applying for also the capital for actually starting it. You know, if it's going to need furniture, if it's going to need some computers, if it's going to need other furnishings inside that space, our grant application would include those items as well, just those hard startup costs along with the initial upfront study. So nobody's going to do a $100,000 study. This is not, I'm with you Clarence. Government efficiency is hard to come by. This is not a $100,000 study. This is, it's going to be bare bones all the way through. I promise you that. Everything about this is going to be squeezed for efficiency. It really is. There's no, there's going to be no fat in this. We're going to be looking for volunteers to do a lot of the teaching, a lot of the training. This is about as lean an operation as you're ever going to find.
Sounds to me like you heard you were talking about buying furniture and everything else for a building, so.
A leased space, a rented space.
So who's going to be responsible for that space?
You're going to...
Who's going to lease it? Who's going to run it? Who's going to do it? Is the city government paying for all that?
No, 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 no. I think from a staffing standpoint, I know DECA will be very involved coming out of the schools and that'll be kind of a foundational piece right there. There has been talk that other already existing community agencies could locate there part of the time. So yes, you're spot on. From a programming standpoint, you're going to need people to run programs and there are costs associated with that and all that's going to have to be reckoned with through this whole conversation. And some of it's already here, but some of it is operating out of a little tiny cubicle somewhere that needs more space.
So you're basically kind of going back to just what Mr. Vedder had talked about.
How's that?
Well, you're saying you're going to hire people, you've got 50 people, and that's what he's telling you. You've got a community ed, you've got all these people to do all this stuff already.
You know, and community ed's a wonderful thing. Community ed might miss the point of some of the cultural collaboration, cultural gathering. And this isn't me starting this. This is me hearing it from those who want to get it going and me saying, "Look, if there's a chance to do it, let's see if it can be done." You know, do you want to take your wife out to a nice meal at a community ed event? Just as an example.
Depends on what they're serving.
Yeah. So, thanks Dale.
Mike?
Just one more quick thing. I think what would be useful is, we've had Mr. Gordy and the mayor speak to us about this. I'd like to meet some of the people that are involved and they can answer some of these questions that are being posed to us that we might not have the answers for.
You're awesome.
Community Ed has been involved in this process the entire time. She, Mrs. Stortle has walked hand-in-hand with that group that has kind of led from the school. And able to do this successfully, to get these people so that they can bring their kids to school and fill out their enrollment papers and without embarrassment to have to have somebody try to do those things for them. I want you to put yourselves in those kinds of situations where these people want to go to work. The problem is, there's a language barrier for them that they can't go to work. It's not like they want to sit around and do nothing. You need to sit down and you need to try and have or meet these people and with their kids to look at their faces when they can't do the things for themselves and they feel helpless. That's part of the problem. That's the drive behind this group. They see that. They've tried to do little things here and there, the tech college. The other part of the problem is, is transportation. They can't pass the driver's test. They can't get to where they need to go. So part of that is, yep, we have the city bus, but the city bus doesn't work for everybody all the time. They also have other children home with daycare. So there's all kinds of things that have been talked about and looked at. I think what we need to do is, when we do have our next meeting, we need to make sure that everybody is aware. We can post it, let people that are on the council come and listen to see what's going on. I think this is an effort. I don't think it's $100,000 that's going to open up a window and drive around and throw at anybody. I don't think that's the process at all. I think the process is to try to get going and get going when we just see the immediate need. That's the bottom line. We've been talking about this. You're either going to vote a yes or you're going to vote a no. It doesn't matter, but just, you need to think about it if you were in a situation where you were in a different country, you didn't know how to speak the language, you're trying to get your kids in to do whatever. You know, Mark brought up sports. Again, it's, there's a language barrier that, that's what it is. And that's kind of the whole process of trying to get this up and running. I mean, it's not, we're not trying to build a building, we're not trying, they're not trying to do that. They're just trying to get up and running to get some people in so they feel comfortable and safe. That's the bottom line.
Anybody else have anything to add? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I would add to the, to that sports thing. Part of the thing is, is the problems that I've seen anecdotally are with the kids. The kids usually pick up the language pretty quickly. I've been to the clinic and the kid, there's seven-year-old kid that's translating for their mom and dad in the doctor's office, you know. So it's not the kids. It's really trying to help out the adults that have a bunch on their plate, just like everybody else. So if you just imagine what we go through every day and then trying to have, to learn a language or whatever. I've done, with my family, we've done some family tutoring in the home and it's tough because there's a lot going on and, you know, I get the idea of trying to create some sort of isolation so that, you know, it's usually mom. Mom, you know, is taking care of the kids and doesn't have the time, you know, and she needs to be able to study and do all this stuff. Well, if you can't, because you're doing all this stuff in your home, it's nice to be able to go somewhere else. I know the tech has had some success with some of their projects or their programs, but they're night school and it's, they have some stuff. I get it and I want to support this and stuff. I just want to make sure that we're taking care of, looking at all phases because I think there's a difference between teaching language and integrating. And integrating is maybe the next step, but it's, it should be part of the, part of the conversation and I think that goes beyond a building.
When college students come to the US from foreign countries, very often, they'll get a semester of English immersion. Before they even enroll for the rest of the curriculum, they get a semester or a year of English immersion so that everything that follows in their physics or their biology or their English, whatever else they study, makes sense. So we're trying to do something like that here, is to really ramp up those English skills and then it takes off from there. And I'm with you, Mark, when you say, "If they just are ending up cloistered in a cultural center," we have failed because the goal would be now we're all free to connect once they get up to speed in the language and math skills.
Well, the other thing too is, we just heard from, from the chamber that one of the problems that we're having is employment and getting people to fill those jobs. I know from our, the company I work for, we're looking for employees all the time and, you know, if you can't pass the language thing, it's, that's the first hurdle. Obviously, there's other skills down the road, but if it provides, you know, it provides for an additional workforce, you know, that we desperately need, so.
Anybody else have anything? Anything else from the community at all? Has any comments, questions? Yes, ma'am? If you want to come up and state your name and your address up here, please. No, we won't be able to hear you. Make sure you state your name and your address, please, for the record.
1621 19th Street Northwest.
Thanks for coming, Shar.
Yep. I really know there's a problem and a need in our community. I'm nervous. But when we started having these people come into our community years ago, I asked the question to our representative, Keel and others, "How are you preparing them to integrate into our community?" And we were, I was told that Lutheran Social Services, Catholic Social Services and all these great places, "We're going to integrate them and teach them to read, write and whatever" before they came into the communities. Are we looking back at any of those services for the need that we're looking at now?
Those people are at the table. With us.
Okay. So they're ready to help as well?
Right.
Because it's kind of sad that we've been influx and I feel sorry for our school system. I know there's a problem, but I really think we need to look back at those services and get them involved with all of this as well. Thank you.
I'm sure some of that will come out in the study when they come back of working those groups in with everything, so it's a good question. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have anything? Not to ask for roll call. Okay, roll call, please.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
No.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to 22, Consider Adopting Life Connected as Citywide Brand, which is good follow after what we just talked about. Mr. Gordy?
Move. Second.
Mr. Gordy?
I just wanted to talk briefly about branding versus logos. And I'm going to think, does anybody ever watch a football game, a National Football League game?
You know, Vikings are playing? No, since they started taking a knee, I won't watch.
But you look at the NFL, you look at Major League Baseball, I mean, Mike and I were talking before the meeting, he's got on a twin shirt. You look at Coca-Cola. The underlying theme for all of those, for the NFL is the NFL. For Major League Baseball, it's MLB. For Coca-Cola, if you see whether it's on a Coke Zero or Diet Coke or Sprite or Minute Maid product, you see Coca-Cola on it. The brand is the underlying theme that connects everything. And it doesn't mean that you can't have differences. Look at the 32 different logos in the NFL under the underlying theme of the NFL. And what this does is creates an underlying theme for the community and it was, it has been created from the ground up by the responses from citizens and this is what was distilled. We have talked about it a couple of times. The EDA has talked about it. EDA today adopted it and recommended approval to yourselves and they are hopeful that you will approve this as well. It means that, for example, our different departments that have logos, such as Water and Light, that have spent a lot of time on their logo, will still use their logo, but in addition to that, this will be there and it will be phased in over time. What we're looking at is a very soft launch over the next few weeks and then sometime in December, after we've talked with Cory. Cory's putting together the materials so that we can do stationery and things like that, because we do, we print our own stationery when we do letters. So we can launch it hard that way, so it's there, but it doesn't replace, it supplements and unifies all the different logos and activities from the various departments. So it's a different thing than a logo, but it's an underlying theme that is a connected theme, which ironically, since it's life-connected, is what we're talking about.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gordy? Mr. Pachivski?
Just to thank Mr. Gordy and the folks from AE2S for all the work they put into this. I think it's been embraced by the council and the EDA board and I think it's something we've been talking about for a long time, now let's launch it and let's make sure we get the most use out of it by not just having this, but we actually have to invest in rolling it out and using it to present our community to the rest of the world.
Got ideas on how to do that? We have ideas, for example, if I may. We looked at how this can be done for the various departments so that you can see the overall theme, but it retains individual economics department as well. And just like the Vikings don't want to be called the Packers, Water and Light doesn't want to be called Economic Development. So if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this is more for a comment for Mr. Murphy. I would say, if we do end up adopting this, I would say, in kind of the same vein as what Mike was getting at, is maybe we should look at, how do you incorporate this into our meetings? How do we incorporate it into all the decisions we make? If it's going to be the underlying brand of East Grand Forks, we need to make that a part of our decision-making process. I don't know what that exactly looks at like right now, but as we start thinking about things, it should become the culture of decision-making that we ask the question, "Does this make us more connected? Does it make us less connected?" Or something. And I guess, not to put that just on you, but to have you brainstorm with staff to start thinking about it at that level. And I guess it's, it's up to us as a board to kind of reinforce that as well and try to hold each other accountable to bring that up more often and, like I said, incorporate it into our decision-making, making sure that we're staying true to that.
That's why I handed that, shared that with you. We were looking for ways that we could show, you know, when we originally showed, you can see over here, EDA is short, I can abbreviate that, but you know what? I know what EDA is and you guys know what EDA is and the EDA knows what EDA is, but not everybody knows what an EDA is. So we looked at, do we really want to? Do we want to expand it so you have the entire name? Whether it's Public Works, Water and Light, Public Administration, whatever it might be, expand it. So what we did is we expanded beyond what we had, what we show you there. So we have the basic and then you can notice, we put it in gold for the different departments with a different color, so it identifies the departments themselves differently than what it does for the city as a whole. Just trying to do a little bit of differentiation so it shows the unity and at the same time, it shows that there's uniqueness in each of the areas.
Murphy?
Thank you. Yeah, that is a, that is a good point. I will move that forward as far as how we can integrate it, as far as how the council does make their decisions in having it as a backing theme. That's a good point and I will take it.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Gordy at this time? Thank you, sir. Not for roll call, please.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Motion is carried. Number 23, Consider Adopting Resolution Number 18-09-59, approving the 2018 tax levy collectible in 2019 for total of $5,404,166 and set the public budget meeting for December 4th, 2018 with a continuance hearing if necessary, December 18th, 2018.
Move.
By Demers. Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Any roll call, please?
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, Consider Authorizing City Administrative Clerk Treasurer to issue payment of recun bills and payroll. Move by Demers.
Sorry.
Second by Grassl. Roll call.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassl?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Regander.
Well, as we're talking about all economics and we happen to have the chamber director here and we have Mr. Gordy here and we have our branding effort here, I do believe that the city of East Grand Forks gives really good customer service. I'm looking at department heads across this whole spectrum and every one of you, every day is involved in giving customer service. You don't think of yourselves as a monopoly and people don't have a choice. You look at yourselves as, you know, how do we exceed the expectations of our citizens day by day, every single day? Kind of a private sector mentality to government service. And I hear it all the time. I hear it whether it's building permits, I hear it whether it's just across the board, folks doing business with members of our city staff and very pleased with the service that they get. So thank you. You can't really brand something if it's not a good organization and something that you're not proud of. I don't care how glitzy you market something, it's nothing. It's just a fancy campaign, but nothing to back it up. But we absolutely back it up every day, I think, with giving really good customer service to our citizens. Just a couple of updates. Mayor Brown and I kicked off with everybody else out there Grand Toberfest last Friday night. Barry was there and I found out, I found out that you're the grandnephew of Whoopi John. I love that, the musician. And then after that was invited, we were invited out to the 71st birthday party of the Grand Forks Air Force Base. They had a wingding, which was all airmen in their fine dress uniforms and it was a pleasure. I loved being out there and that was also Friday night. And maybe Mr. Tweetin wants to talk about the great connection that's developing between, again, the Air Force Base and Northland Community Technical College. Back one last to the cultural center. Thank you to everybody who came in support of that. Shar, thank you for your thoughts. Clarence, thank you for your thoughts. And please hold our feet to the fire. A project like this could start to morph in different directions and actually move in a way that maybe we would not prefer. And so we'll be mindful of that and we'll work really hard to make sure that it does not become a big government drain or a place where people just go and we don't ever get to hang out with them there. You know, we get to guide this process to what serves the community best. And so I'm glad that we're at the table to bring it to what would serve the community. And so I'm glad that we're at the table to, to bring it to what would serve the community the best. So to anyone who had a concern or hesitation or reluctance, which probably we all did in some way, stay engaged and help to guide it in the most favorable way. Thanks.
Mr. Vedder?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Pachivinsky?
Nothing tonight.
Riappel?
Nothing.
Mr. Tweetin?
Nothing.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing.
Mr. Grassl?
Nothing.
I have one question from Mr. Stordahl. Is this week, what's going to be closed downtown this Saturday? Is there anything being closed downtown parade or?
Yeah, uh, the work should be closed now for a period. I think the parade's new, parade's named, uh, named. So it'll be closed sometime during now.
And tonight at 10 o'clock, the Kennedy opens up?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gallsted?
Um, just to follow up on the, the charter commission, the paperwork is before Judge Ben Schuh. I'm just waiting for the order to be signed. I'll follow up with him again, but I haven't heard anything. I don't foresee any issues.
Henry?
Um, just an update for you. As you've all seen, Op Construction's been making pretty good progress on 17th Street Northwest with the ADA work that they're doing there. See a lot of progress with the multi-use trail the next week or two. So I'm hoping within the next two to three weeks, everything up on the north end should be wrapped up. They are going to be starting the end of this week down on Greenway Boulevard between 11th and 14th where we're making, making some changes to the medians there, kind of to improve traffic flow. So that will be starting the end of this week with some removals and miscellaneous work, so.
Anything from the department heads? Chief?
We do have a lot of things coming out of the city to neighborhood around Greenway Boulevard regarding issues with pets that have been allowed to roam free in that neighborhood, creating a number of issues in, in some of the residences with, with basically doing what animals do and people not taking responsibility. So just kind of a reminder that if your pets are out, especially in other people's yards, please make sure you clean up after your pets. And pets aren't supposed to be roaming free in the city. We do have leash laws in this city.
Anything else from the department heads? See none. Remember we have a special meeting afterwards downstairs. entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Led by Demers, second by Grassl. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion is carried.[1751.65]